All right, we're on. We're gonna call the meeting to order at 1:01 PM. The Watton County Fire District 21 and we'll start with a roll call.
Scott Fisher.
Rich Fosman.
Kimberly is muted right now, sorry. There you go.
Murray, sorry about that.
No problem. Bruce Ansel.
Jason Reddick.
Henry's in the audience, but.
Henry Hollander, how's that?
There he is, there he is. All right, no public comment due to the proclamation by the governor and that seems to be going on and on and on and on. Who knows when it will end? We'll go ahead and open the volunteer pension board meeting and the first item is the approval of the September 17th. Meeting minutes. Move seven minutes, thank you.
I thought you fell out of your chair.
I know, I was like dang.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Chief, we have the approval of a new volunteer.
Yes, sir. Seeking approval of bringing on Mr. Dylan Whitzel. He's gonna be a 24-hour shift volunteer working with career crews. He does have firefighter and EMT credentials and he comes to us from Cedar Wally area.
So, explain that to us if you would. I mean, our volunteer program has had its ups and downs through the years and we were gonna try to have a resident program one time or another and, and this sounds, do we have other individuals that are doing this or is this the first for us?
We do have one other individual currently who's doing this and it's a yeah, we're basically poaching people that are already trained instead of taking the, you know, what we found over the, over the years is that new volunteers don't tend to stick around very long. They're looking to get hired, picked up somewhere and so we put a lot of money into training, a lot of time into training and then they're here for a year or two and they take off. And so what we're doing is taking, offering people that have been trained somewhere else, the opportunity to get some more experience, kind of have the the inside interview going on with another agency with us while they're here. They can work with our career crews, crew additional training and then you know, if we're hired, maybe apply here or move on somewhere else, but we're, and they serve as the fourth on a crew. So it gives the crew to have more personnel onboard and that's just a good experience for everybody.
Are the crews embracing that opportunity?
I would say that the individuals tend to work with certain crews.
Okay, all right. So, that's good. All right, so we'll need a motion to add him to our roster, correct?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
I just think it's a great idea.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
It's unanimous? We of course now follow that with a volunteer separation. It's one for one, that's all right.
So this is, this will be separating Stephanie Holstein. She is a rehab volunteer, which is part of the group that comes out on bigger structure fires and takes vitals, helps with cooling firefighters down or giving them a warm, dry place to kind of hide out from the weather. Stephanie's been with us for a number of years. She happens to be the wife of one of our career firefighters and they have a new little person in their family and she's just feeling the, it's hard to respond 24, 24/7 with a new, a new little guy hanging around. So she's asked to take a step back.
How many individuals are in that rehab group? Do you have a number?
Primary individuals, we have three. But with the, we moved the rehab unit from Station 70 to Station 68 and we're training up the tender group volunteers to, to kind of act as force multipliers, for lack of a better word, to be able to bring the rehab unit out. So we've, we're increasing the number of people that are able to bring that unit out. So it will be really part of the tender group going forward.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the separation of Stephanie Holstein.
Yes, sir.
Been moved?
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous? And please thank Stephanie for her service to the district and you know, who knows, maybe someday when the little one gets bigger, she'll wanna come back. She'll want time away. All right, if there's no further business before the volunteer pension board, I'll move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right, we'll open the regular Board of Commissioners meeting at 1:07 PM and the first item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it. So in the consent agenda is the September 17th meeting minutes, the staff reports, the financial reports. And I am under the impression that we may want to discuss one of the vouchers that are in this packet.
Yeah. I'd like to pull out vouchers on page six of seven from the claims payment request. So, on the screen, all the pages are not numbered, so that's about as close as I can give you to, to find it. And it's a voucher to the Molejack group for $950 for an appraisal for our District Four. So I guess I'm wondering if maybe the chief could enlighten me on what was that for, the process for that?
That is, that is a voucher that was, it is for District Four. It's an appraisal report for Station 12, the Station 12 campus. You might remember some number, a number of months ago, District Four got, had a commercial real estate person come through and tell them what Station 12 would be valued at on the commercial rental market. That was the offices at Station 12 and Building D. This voucher in particular is I have held on to this for a month or so and kind of unsure where to put it. And it's, I, I put it in now and chose the bars number it's, it's appropriate to and I would ask, I understand your concern that it is a, it is a different District Four specific request that we would be paying for that, you know, how, how do we justify that? And we all know there's been a number of up and downs over the last few months and it, it seems that we are on a, on a good path, you know, working with the RFA stuff and, and you're probably asking how do those two connect? Yes, it is, it was, it was done in an interest of changing, you know, look, they were looking forward to changing maybe what they had to pay District 21 back for as far as their, their quarterly payment and in speaking with the Chair of District Four, they're, they're gonna make that payment. They realized that there's a contract and that's, you know, that you, your group and myself and District Four, we, we agree that there's a contract and there's a fourth quarter payment that's due and it's gonna get paid. This we, while while it could be, it could be the impression that maybe this report was asked for at a time of conflict, it's actually doing District Four a lot of good right now in that Bellingham Fire is looking to rent those offices at Station 12 and bring District Four's in much needed revenue in. I would ask that you do pay this, this voucher as it is here, but in turn officially order me to seek to seek reimbursement from District Four so that I can bring this forward to the District Four Board and let them know your concerns on the public record and that we can work together to make sure that these type of arrangements don't happen where, where it's a surprise to one group or the other that we're, that we're, it's gonna force us into talking. It's gonna help us with that communication piece that we've been missing really over the past I'd say 18 to 24 months. The boards haven't been talking, talking face to face and I think this is a good opportunity for the District 21 Board to, to kind of leverage me and my relationship with the District Four Board in, in bringing us all to the table to talk. So for that reason, I'd ask you to, to include the voucher, but like I said, direct me to go to the District Four Board and see and ask for, for to get reimbursement for District 21 for this $950.
So you said you held on to it for a while. So does that mean as, as far as I see there's an invoice number on it, is that something that we're past due and paying to the Molejack group?
We're not past due, but we're, we're at the time where it needs to get paid. The other portion part is, when I think about it, that company did their work. They did what they were hired to do and like I said, my, I made the mistake in not submitting it immediately in an effort to try to figure out exactly how to deal with it and but they, they do deserve to get paid. And I do believe that I have the relationship with the District Four Chair and with the members of their board that I can get the District 21 will be reimbursed with this funds.
Well, I guess my first thought, other than the fact that I, I really question whether we should pay for it is as a business owner, I know how frustrating it is to have a bill that's not being paid and it sits there for 30, 60, 90 days and what kind of reflection that is on the payee. So for that reason, I would be in favor of us paying it. But very definitely, we should be talking to District Four about reimbursement because I don't as far as I can tell, I don't think we're responsible for that, for that invoice. But I, that's just my opinion. I'm open to what the rest of board members think on that.
Rich, I, I agree with you. When I went through the vouchers, it caught my eye as well and I have had a discussion or two with the chief as to how to best approach resolution to this. The the concern I have is where is the clear definition of what is truly their expense versus what is truly our expense? I know that the contract says that, that they will pay 25% of our operating budget, but those are things that, that we, in my opinion, incur to run our district and cover them as well. It, it doesn't make sense to me, for example, if, if they chose to order all brand-new office furniture, would we then also be expected to pay for all of their office furniture even though maybe they currently have stuff that works? I don't think that's an expense that, that we would, would enter into on our own and don't feel that it would be something that we should be obligated to pay for. And, and this one was basically a inquiry as to how to charge us money to be in that office and, and you know, a lot of hard feelings were developed over that whole thing. And I'm going to trust that the chief is, is going to get reimbursed for this and help explain it to the D4 Board. I just don't want this to to keep happening where we have to go through every voucher and, and make sure that it truly is an expense that we would have incurred normally. Scott, you have any ideas, opinions?
I think we should pay it, but have the chief try to get us reimbursed from District Four.
Kimberly, you're a business person. What's your thoughts?
I agree with all of you as well. Being in business, you want things paid sooner than later, but was it an extent, since it's a rather high expense, was it something that was pre, had pre-approval? Or who ordered it or who signed the contract and?
That would be a very good question. It certainly wasn't pre-approved on our end and I have no knowledge of whether their board pre-approved that expense or not.
There, there's a whole question here of, of process.
Right.
It should run through the right channels and in this case, as far as I can tell, there was no channel that was followed, followed. It was just done. Nobody knew about it and it was nothing was pre-approved. So that's as much of an issue in my mind as the monetary part of it. I mean, we're expected in governance to make sure that proper process is followed. In this case, I don't see that any process was followed. So I would expect that that would be a part of the conversation that the chief would have with their board.
Mr. Fosman, I was just gonna say, this is a perfect opportunity for us to have that discussion about how exactly are we going to make sure that things are approved or known beforehand so that, you know, this doesn't happen again. And I, I think that's one of the shortfalls that the current ILA has. It's one of the things, you know, when we talk about you need to revisit the ILA, it's one, it's one of the things on the list is how do, if an individual identifies something that needs to happen, how do you, how do you approve that? You know, if I, I don't remember the words exactly, but the, the ILA says if, you know, if there's a substantial cost, if District Four incurs a substantial cost, that that will be negotiated. The payment of that will be negotiated between the District Four and District 21 Board, but to find substantial costs, that means something different to everybody. So how would we even, you know, how would we even fix that if we had a, you know, a some sort of structural damage to one of the stations or, you know, some sort of accident that maybe not an insurance claim, but needed to be repaired. There's not even a starting number or a starting, anywhere to start with that conversation.
All right, well, not that we need more work to do, but I'm hoping that if, if we move forward with the RFA, a lot of those issues will go away with that formation. So perhaps we won't have to address it for the long term. All right, so Rich, you're willing to keep that in there, have it paid and allow the chief to work on reimbursement?
Yes, I am.
All right, so that brings us back to the consent agenda and I will read the numbers in. The total revenue for September was The total expenditures were $724.57.70. Employee direct deposit payroll, $326,265.9. Payroll taxes, $68,689.7. Benefits voucher, $269,999.90. Monthly expenditure vouchers, $57,821.96. Capital projects facilities voucher, $1,281.68. There has been a motion, there has been discussion. Is there any other issues for discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye. Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Commissioner meeting reports. I know that probably should go back to roll call and, and let everyone know that John Crawford was excused for a family issue. And I think he attended the county commissioners meeting via Zoom. He has been good about sending out the notes and minutes from those meetings, so I will accept those as, as his report. And then Kimberly, John spoke to me about adding you to the 911 committee as a backup person for him, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So that would be in case he would be unable to attend, is that the idea or?
Correct, because some of the meetings are at the same time as the RFA meetings. And so it's impossible for him to attend both at the same time.
Gotcha.
So when they overlap, then I'll go in his place. And if they don't, then he'll attend.
Okay, and, and you're all geared up and ready to do that? Perfect, thank you. Anyone else have anything? Commissioner reports?
First, I'll just interject that we are attending the Blaine City Council meetings again.
Okay.
And starting to make some presentations and reestablish that, that network that came from the tank, the police chief of Blaine through the city council had stopped by my house and requested that we start doing that again.
Okay.
So I think we've made, we've made one out of two and we'll get it on our agenda to be there every other Monday.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, point that out.
I know that they always appreciated your smiling face at their meetings. All right, we'll move on to local 106 report. Just FYI, the Blaine Thanksgiving baskets are going to occur again this year. I don't have the date and I know that there's gonna be sort of limited interaction with the public this, in the past, people would come in to the building and, and pick up their, their orders and, and crews would take them out to their cars. I think this year it's gonna be basically, they're gonna drive up and, and somebody will, will run out and, and deposit the food baskets, baskets into their vehicles. And there obviously isn't gonna be any homemade pies this year or anything like that. So a little bit different, but the the membership is still gonna participate in helping to put those baskets together. I, I don't have a date as to when that's gonna happen though.
November 24th.
Thank you, Henry.
I'll be picking up the turkeys on the 23rd.
And is it gonna be in that same location by Cost Cutter there?
No, you might have caught me on that one. It doesn't say on my email course, but I'm assuming so. I haven't heard of any different, so.
That, that space is still vacant, is it?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, appreciate that. Richard Davis is not here today, so I'm assuming we have no legal issues to speak of, chief. And we'll move on to unfinished business. The first item is the audit.
The last, the last thing on the audit and I expect it to be finished up this month. So be looking for an email about an exit interview. It's been, the, the reason that the chiefs that were here in 2018 and 2019 aren't here. And so sometimes tracking down how or why things are done is a little, has been a little difficult, but we've been, we persevered, the auditor's been very patient with us and seem to be pleased with what, what we've submitted.
All right, and thank you to all the staff time that's been put into that process. It's, it's, it's been a pretty involved one. And like you said, it's hard to find all the, the pieces. But I know that people in the office are good at, at keeping all the records. It's just digging them all out. All right, the inter-local agreements, both of them are, are still pending?
Moving ahead, yep, the county has the numbers that they need in order to redraft the ILA for the sick leave reimbursement. And once we get that, then actually both of these, you've given me the authorization to sign. They'll get assigned and we can get them off the agenda.
All right, so we're, what you're saying is that's the calculations to make them haul in their sick leave?
Yes, sir.
All right, and how about the overtime reimbursement? How's that coming along?
It's, it's tied to the same thing. It's gonna, it's gonna adjust, they're gonna adjust the amount of reimbursement we get up. So it's adjusting that final number. So it's, it's in progress, it's just.
I thought we were gonna get a piece of it at a time, is that?
That's what I thought too, and then when it's on paper, it's different than maybe what they said, so. And so we don't do anything without paper.
It's like waiting for that first GEMT check, you know, it's just kept next month, next month. All right, any other unfinished business?
No, sir.
All right, move on to new business. So there are several documents that were sent out regarding the RFA discussions. Now, obviously myself, Scott, the chief and Rich have been at those meetings. The only person who this would be new information to would be you, Kimberly. So I know that some of those documents, what, didn't come out till yesterday perhaps? Did you have a chance to look through them at all?
I did.
I'm putting you on the spot, aren't I? So, so the, the goal here or I guess the, the expected requirement that we have agreed to do as a planning committee is to make sure that the, the boards are appraised of what is going on so that when we sort of get to a decision-making place, there's no surprises. In our case, we have a majority of the boards at the RFA on the committee already, so it's almost a moot point. I would imagine maybe in larger jurisdictions or if cities are involved or whatever, part of that process is to come back and make sure that, that there are no surprises. So that's the plans we've been working on, the, the communications plan, the, the website language. We wanna start getting the message out to the public through our monthly newsletter and on our joint website with District Four and District 21 so that people aren't surprised in August when we hopefully have an issue before the voters, that it's been well-vetted and they've had the chance to ask questions and, and even knowing what RFA stands for would be a nice thing that the public would by the time we get to that point. So the expenditure plan was proposed and passed there and, and unless someone here has, has heartache, it was agreed to split the costs associated with the RFA. And in my opinion, that's, that's Karen Reed's costs and our financial review person, his name again, Jason.
Bill Cushman.
Bill Cushman's costs. Attorneys, perhaps our marketing costs, all that stuff was voted to be split 50/50. So unless we as a group decide that we wanna do it differently, that's, that's the direction we are moving. I know that Scott and Rich and myself are okay with that. I can't imagine you would be opposed to that, but you have an opportunity to tell me if you are. So I don't know if, if there's anything that caught your eye in there. Whether there, and then for me, probably you seeing it fresh is, is, is probably more beneficial now than anything. And if, if you currently have any comments, that would be If you currently have any comments, that would be great if if. You don't or you come up with something, if if you could forward those. To Scott and myself, that would be helpful, Scott, the vice chair of the RFA committee. And sometimes it's just a tweak in the language or something from your experience in business or whatever that you say, hey, what if we worded it this way or? We've we left this key piece out or something like that.
Nothing jumped out at me right away, but I'll go through it again. I did just read it through once yesterday. So I'll go through it more thoroughly and get back to you.
Yeah, if you kind of put your naive citizen hat on and say, you know, if I were to read this. Does it make sense? Does it explain to me or or does it generate? Additional questions that might be pertinent to someone? I mean, obviously, we want, we want people to approve this. The the key piece is going to be what we set the mill rate at and and so. That's going to be a huge discussion when we get to that point, so.
Yeah, it was a lot of information to process, so I'll definitely be reading through it several more times.
And some of it is just, you know, like timeline, rules of engagement, stuff like that, that we kind of all vetted in the committee, but but. It's a pretty aggressive timeline. You know, we we really want to get this going and moving forward and and so that it will be on the August. Twenty twenty one ballot. And if we accomplish that, then everything would roll through to where we would start. With the new taxing structure, January of twenty twenty two. Because we don't have a lot of. Sort of operational issues, since we're doing all that work already as one. And we don't have, you know, four fire chiefs we're dealing with and and, you know, a city council and everything else, it it should. Move right along. Getting our financial forecast and and marketing plan is probably some key ones, so. As an item on here is a financial forecast review committee now. You know, we've hired an expert to do that, but. I know that. Jason and staff here could use as much help as possible and looking. Using our master plan that we paid for. We still need to kind of look at a a seven year forecast. For where we are, what we need. What we want, what we wish for, where we think we're going to be and. I know, Henry, I'm I'm not going to drag you into this committee, but I I think getting your eyes on this at some point. Would be useful, just because of of your time and experience and. In the district, not asking you to to write this thing up, but if. At some point, we get that document in a draft form, would you be willing to take a look at it for us as well?
Sure, no problem.
Good answer, thank you. So I don't, I I know. Kimberly, I'm 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 kind of looking at you, kind of, I know you're you're busy and and new and everything, and I don't want to overwhelm you, but. And I'm not expecting that we're going to be doing all the heavy lifting here, but is that something that you might want to be? Of all involved in. That process of helping us kind of look over some financial planning issues?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, so chief, I guess we just need to work with you and decide, I mean, part of the reason. I'm asking we do this is knowing that you're shorthanded. As well and and to help take some of that burden off of you, so maybe we can sit down. On the what twenty seventh or whatever and come up with a. A plan of how we want to divide some of this stuff up or how how Kimberly and I can be of use to you. And not be in your way, basically. The last thing I want to do is slow you down.
No, that, yeah, we can, we can definitely do that and I'll put some, I'll put some ideas on paper and we'll go over on the twenty seventh.
I mean, I think our consultant is going to be. Doing the majority of that work based on the SCI's report. I mean, they talked about our equipment and our stations and our staffing and. And he's going to know our growth numbers and he's going to know the county projections and and. You know, Henry's. Already told us about all the new housing that's going to be happening up there in East Blaine and.
Really what we need to do is. We know where we are today, we just want to, as opposed to the ESI report says where they want us to be, but but what the what Mr. Cushman's looking for is where do we want to be? Where do we see ourselves? Where do we see ourselves? Where do we see us fitting into the community? And that's.
Yeah, and I I mean, I think that's kind of the purpose of our board anyway. I mean, we've we've danced around all these sort of day to day issues all. Since I've been here for four plus years now. But really, it's it's our fiduciary responsibility to say. You know, how much money are we going to spend and what kind of? Tax burden are are we going to impose? I don't think whatever mill rate we settle on is going to resolve our capital needs and that's. You know, station remodels and aging equipment, so. We've got to figure out if we want to capital bond in the. Foreseeable future as well, so. And it's got to pass the voters too, so.
Always that piece.
We can, we can always, we know what we want, just can we can we afford it and 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 get it, so. So we'll get back to you, Kimberly, then when we kind of have a. A plan and maybe have a couple little work sessions that fit around. Your timeframe. I don't want to burden you to have to take more time off work, but if it's something we could do in the evening or whatever that or a weekend, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Okay, me too.
Okay, next item under new business is the commissioner webinar series. I think there were like three topics. And and Kimberly, you had you had asked about attending or watching the the one on PTSD. What are your thoughts there? What?
Well, I just find it very interesting and it's a very real part of. What our firefighters go through, the things they have to see and deal with and take home with them.
I think one of them was peer support. Also, I can't remember what the other one was, but peer support and PTSD were were two of the three.
Yeah.
Legal issues in twenty twenty.
Legal issues. Anyway.
I had it, sorry.
I know that probably peer support is near and dear to Rich's art. I was on our peer support team for ten and twelve years in Bellevue, so. I don't know that we really have an organized group here in. Our district at this point.
Very loosely organized.
Right, so.
Well, I could attend that one as well, too. I mean, I've been very involved with burn support groups for thirty six years.
Right, so I just wanted to bring it up to the board that that these the series is out here, it's a minimal cost if anyone is interested. They're here and I know that Kimberly had asked to attend at least one of those, so. I'm I'm certainly in favor of of her doing that, so. If anyone else has any comments or wants to attend, let the chief and Jenny know. Any other new business? Correspondence, we, yeah, sorry.
Before I know.
Been dying to sit through a whole commissioner's meeting since he came back on board.
Oh, sweet. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. I thought he just came to see us.
That's it, that's all I came for, really.
Henry, please enlighten us.
And there was one other thing too, chief, was the the vehicle. I don't know why you want to bring that up in the agenda. That I talked to you about yesterday, but on the fire marshal side, we're all caught up with the backlog of work. We've we've got probably a dozen builders that we're working with. On new development, the biggest areas right now are Semiamu, the city of Blaine and kind of the central guide area around Pole. Pulling guy, there's a a big. Convenience store market coming in that corner and also a twelve building RV storage facility. Coming in in the Bartlett area or it's all this is proposed, so they're working through the permitting process. I I checked with staff this morning in August or September and October, we've brought in about nineteen thousand and change. On mitigation fees. So that that's, you probably saw that on the report, I don't see the chief's report. And other than that, I'm working with Joel as much as we can, it's it's there's some challenges with scheduling. Because he works twenty four hour shifts and I work Tuesdays and Thursdays, sometimes. But yeah, so we have the goal to. To get Joel up and running by the first of the year. Might be a little aggressive, but that we're gonna, we're gonna shoot for that. Other than that. That's that's about where we are. On the fire marshal side, the inspection side is 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 hanging in there. I don't, I can't give you an update on. City of Blaine commercial inspections. I don't know what we've done on that. I'll have to ask Joel where we are on that.
All right.
And all those meetings, all those TRC meetings are all also by Zoom. Which makes it really challenging to look at a set of plans that are usually three feet by four feet. And try to climb, put those plans on a nineteen inch screen. Yeah, there's there's some challenges to that, so to think about for the future.
Well, thank you again for bailing us out and stepping in. We we tried to figure out our best way to get you back, so. I guess it worked out, but I know it takes time away from. Perhaps other things you you could be doing, but we appreciate what you've done for the district. And during this time when things are really look like they're starting to boom, so. Appreciate it. Okay, so any questions for Henry at all before he before before we let him? Get back to work. Let's see, it is Thursday, right? So you have to work today.
Thank you. Real quick, he alluded to a vehicle question. I just want to see. The board's approval, I don't know that I need a a motion or a vote, just a head nod, but. As many of you are maybe aware, Henry's been working with the county EOC at the what's referred to as the COVID hotel. So folks that maybe don't have a place to shelter or to wait out their quarantine period. Due to homelessness or other factors have been staying at the old motel six, which the county has taken over and Henry's. Kind of the chief innkeeper there. They they have lost their transportation. Their mode of transportation for transporting individuals that are there back and forth to the hospital or to the clinics for testing. They have asked to use our van, our our big people mover van. And I, with the understanding that it will be sanitized and cleaned and returned in the same condition it's loaned out in. I went ahead and gave Henry. Initial approval, but I wanted to let the board know that that is. And if you have any concerns about that, we can, we can change that. It's just, it seems like a good thing to do for our community. It will only be used for official business. They've got official drivers. It's not the. It's not the clients that will be driving the van to the corner store. It's just for appointments and such.
Is there any, yeah, I'm all for it. Is are there any insurance issues we have to worry about or since it's being? Driven by quote certified people who are good?
And they're only going to provide two drivers. On site, so I I will follow through on that. That will be one of my questions and then Jason also asked, and I think it's a good idea that we get in writing. That the van will be disinfected and given back in in the same state that it was given. So that, although most of the folks that are coming to the hotel are there for isolation, they've had an exposure. And they not necessarily have tested positive, but they have no place to isolate. And it, you know, in the larger Russian families, we're seeing it, some of the migrant farm worker communities, we're seeing they they just have no place to isolate because. They have eight, ten, twelve people living in the same house. And so, so the county is using the hotel. For that purpose for quarantine and isolation. They did have a a service out of Skagit County Cabulance, it was called. I'm not too familiar with it, but they just, the contract they had, something happened at that company and they just can no longer provide the service. So all of a sudden, the hotel staff is kind of situated with a situation where they have. Folks at the hospital that need to go to the hotel, but there's no way to get them back and forth. And so it's it's actually my suggestion that I ask you if they could use the van. And they're all for it, and I told them I'd get back to them by the end of today with a yes or no. And depending on your thoughts, I think it's a great, great, I would think it'd be a great thing to do for the community.
So do I.
Yeah, I'm, like I said, the only lessons we've learned is is handshake deals are. Only as good as the handshake, so putting something in writing is probably worthwhile and I don't know. As as far as the in insurance liability piece, if it would be who of a call to Richard Davis, just to make sure that. That we haven't missed anything. On that, I mean, if, for example, someone gets in an accident driving that thing, who's liable, you know, is it, is it our liability or is it? Is there somehow that's transferred to the driver or the hotel or the county or this whoever is 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 sort of managing?
I'm I'm assuming that the county will be insuring it during their use, but I'm going to confirm that also in writing. What I needed first was before I went down that road, I wanted to get approval.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of it. I just, I don't want to see the liability come back onto the district if something bad were to happen.
I'll I'll take care of that.
To very least, I think we want copies of their driver's license, the guys who are driving it or gals.
Gals.
Maybe let our insurance know so they aren't surprised.
Okay.
I was going to say the same thing.
Can do.
All right, and thank you for helping out with that as well, too, Henry.
That's what retired life's all about, right?
I thought fishing was good.
Try that one day.
There you go. All right, anything else under new business? All right, correspondence, we got a recalculation of GMT money for twenty eighteen to give us an additional. Six thousand, three hundred and ninety eight dollars and twenty cents. Is that just sort of an accounting thing that happens annually or was this what what created this?
Or somebody paid a back bill or something like that.
Thanks, Henry. Yeah, I mean, it it's nice that it's a positive number and not a negative.
Right.
All right. So. Announcements, this Snur laws update webinar on the twenty first. That one is the big one, that's the all the changes in rules and laws and updates and we paid the. Two hundred and fifty dollar fee that allows us unlimited access to all staff members. It's going to be recorded, so we don't have to be live for six hours and. Watch this thing, we can watch it at our leisure, so I guess I I am certainly going to try to get through that, but I don't want to do it in a six hour setting, so. I think it's one that we can start and stop and and review at our leisure. I probably have to have my grandkids show me how to do that, but. All right, next month, the nineteenth, everyone good? For the next meeting. Get it on my calendar.
Yeah, I'm good. And. I'm good.
Okay. Excellent, all right. Excellent, all right. Um. Agenda items, next meeting. Are we still working on that in your local agreement?
There were some, there were some, it's, the only reason we're working on it is there's specifically some stuff that we're pulling out of that. The previous fire marshal had um put a. Uh several things about uh, you know, having the ability to be armed and commissioned uh while on duty and. I don't see a need for that. We're we're just redlining all that out of there, so that's the only reason. It's not, there's no more back and forth. It's just, it's.
Okay.
Pulling stuff out that we really don't feel is necessary.
Gotcha. All right, so um. We'll probably need uh um an RFA update at our next meeting. And let's see, well. I don't know. Whether we continue the interlocal agreements, I guess. We just put them down there as an FYI. Anything else anyone wants on the next uh meeting? The audit, thank you. All right, any other business? If there is none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh before you do that, on the audit, if they um have a presentation again, I'd like to be present if I can.
Yep, I assume that'll be by Zoom, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would hope that um. That might even make it easier to do it, you know, and have whoever wants to attend if. And when we schedule that, we'll figure out.
And I think it would be beneficial for Commissioner McMurray as well to hear. You know, to kind of see what, see what they did. Um, that's kind of in her wheelhouse. And so I think it would be good for her to to see that and then um be able to give us tips for surviving the next one.
Yeah, let me know.
All right. Right, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Meeting's adjourned, one fifty three PM. Um, document signing, um. Been going.